I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission this Monday, August 8, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge. Mr. Saladin, can you please take the role?
Yes. Commissioner Alsager?
Here.
Commissioner Ecky?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Here.
And Mayor Pirschbacher?
Here.
Commissioners Ronan and Bush are absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we have a quorum, so we will continue the meeting. At this time, we have a welcome and introduction to the new water plant operators, Alexander Swick and Zach Griffith.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Tonight, I'm glad to introduce the two newest members of our water team here at the city. We have Zach Griffith. He started July 18th. He's a Mount Pleasant local. He worked at Firehouse Car Wash from 1995 until 2018, when it changed hands to Mr. Car Wash. He took a brief position with the central restoration at that time, but returned to Mr. Car Wash as the general manager in December of 2019. Prior to '95, Zach worked in maintenance briefly for both the Mount Pleasant Public Schools and the Mount Pleasant Regional Center. Please welcome Zach Griffith. And I'd also like to introduce Alexander Swick. He started full-time with the city July 25th. He's worked as a seasonal for the past few months at the water plant. He comes to us from Salt Lake City, Utah's Public Utilities Department, where he worked as a wastewater maintenance and landscape restoration technician. He previously served in the US Military, US Army, and has a bachelor's degree in history from the University of Utah. Please welcome Alex Swick.
Welcome, both of you. Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Okay. I will take a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? No. The agenda has been accepted. So at this time, we have input on agenda items from the public. If you wish to speak to whatever item is on the agenda tonight, you may come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom my phone. When you're let into the meeting, you will be asked to state your name and address, and then you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to address the commission at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, there is not.
All right. Is there any emails for public comment?
No, there is not.
All right. Then I'm going to close the public comment at this time. Manager Dissence, can you please give us the receipt of petitions and communications?
Absolutely. Receipt petitions and communications includes the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, minutes of the Tax, Increment Finance Authority from March, minutes of the Zoning Board of Appeals from April, and minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board June.
All right. Now, we're at consent items. Is there any items the commission would like to be removed and put into the regular agenda? I don't see any at this time. Manager Dissence, please give us the overview of the consent items.
Absolutely. Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held July 25, 2022, approval of the minutes from the closed session held July 25, 2022, consider approval of purchase from JWC Environmental for a rebuilt 2022 channel grinder assembly for $29,452, of which $16,500 is covered by a 2% grant from the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan, consider waiving fees for downtown pride and pitch competition, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right, I will entertain a motion to accept consent items as presented.
I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Commissioner Ecky moved, and Commissioner Alsager second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Motion carries. Tonight, we do not have any public hearings, so we're going to move right into new business. We have a follow-up discussion on the youth service unit officer. Manager Dissence, can you please over, give us an overview?
Absolutely. At our last city commission meeting on July 25th, Mount Pleasant Public School Superintendent Jennifer Verlinger presented a request to the city commission to consider adding an additional youth services officer at the middle school. Further information, including youth services unit training and tasks, are included in your city commission packet. The city commission is asked to discuss the request from the Mount Pleasant Public Schools District.
Okay. Are there any questions that need to be asked right now of staff before we open discussion? All right. So we have before us, we're doing a follow-up discussion on the youth service units officer. Commissioner Alsager?
Well, I'd like to kick off the discussion by saying I have, I think I've heard very much from both sides of the issue, speaking with some mental health friends and with some current and former principal friends, and then today, just with some people randomly that I spoke with, and some were involved in the schools in different roles. And what I see is kind of the idealistic side of, it'd be great if we didn't need the position. But I, what I'm hearing is that we do. So I'm going to be supporting the position.
Okay. Is the, when they say that we do, what are the reasons that we do? Because I've heard a lot of people saying, we need this, we need this, we need this, but nobody has given me data. And I'm very data-driven, so nobody has given me any research, nobody's given me any data on why we need this?
Yes, some of that is in the paperwork that was on the desk tonight, you know, some of the numbers. And I think those numbers are pretty significant, the number of calls.
Yeah, but I see the number for 2020, but wasn't part of that year, weren't we in lockdown? Where we didn't have students in the school?
That's when uniformed officers responded.
Yeah.
Not, not youth service officers.
Oh, I know, I know. That was when the calls of service.
And so to think that nothing went down or there was no police service that was needed at the school because of COVID, that's not, uh, factors were active to respond with uniformed officers. That's what that call, or that's what that call log entails.
Okay.
It could be the high school incidents, it could be a parking lot accident.
Okay.
Could be, I don't know, trespasser, who knows? I mean, those numbers represent the number of times a uniformed patrol officer has responded to the middle school or high school.
Okay, and those numbers, those are when somebody at the school or the youth service unit officer called for response?
No. The youth service officer would make very seldom calls for road patrol backup or something like that. They would, if they needed help, that would all be in pre-planning, maybe they need help with lockdown drills and that sort of thing. So that's all done in the pre-planning. There may be a very few incidents where the youth service officer would call and ask for additional help. I can't think of many off the top of my head. But that is staff, possibly students, calling. If it was an accident, typically a student would, would call. But definitely at the middle school, that's staff.
Okay, so it-
Look, when we went down, there was one youth service officer there. The incidents doubled.
Well, the incidences of sta, of uniforms being called?
Correct.
Okay.
Doubled.
And why, why do you think it doubled? If, if the youth service officer, unit officer is not the one that's calling these individual, calling-
Because there's nobody there to deal with it. So they, they determined that a police officer was needed. And because there's no officer in the school, because that officer is tied up, one officer is tied up with the high school, there's nobody there. There's nobody there.
So there's no administrator there. Commissioner Ecky?
Police administrator?
No, a school administrator.
I, I don't know if the school, that would be a question for the superintendent, but that isn't, that isn't, that could be the school principal calling.
Okay. Commissioner Ecky?
I find the information provided to us here quite interesting. I'm looking at this thinking, yes, there is an escalation in the numbers. And then, of course, you see some decline, especially in the high school. I am, what I'm about to say, and the decision that I made, you know, I informed by a number of, you know, sources or voices, let's just say voices. One is Director Loria's voice, actually, you know, during the last meeting, when he indicated that what, you know, that what we have right now is one youth officer who, if we're looking at this data and, you know, the itemization of the tasks that we are provided, seems to me to be overwhelmed. And in terms of spatial location, I find that also problematic, that, you know, it is one youth officer who then has to respond to potential calls across the city. I know that this is a small city. So, and I have driven it from high school to middle school to all the other schools. That's not something somebody can do within one minute. And, you know, the mayor is correct in asking about the, you know, the task or the role of the school administrator in this particular case. But then the school administrator might also be preoccupied with administrative work, dealing with curriculum and, you know, staff. So I'm not so sure that that's probably the responsibility or the exclusive responsibility of the administrator. This is an enormous task. I'm going to go back to what I said before. My only concern is that we do not turn our schools into a militarized zone or a place where our students are going to be further traumatized. We're dealing with, you know, if there is a crisis, if you're making these calls because something is happening, the students are engaged in some, you know, activity that they should not be engaged in, it sounds to me as if they're troubled. In a, in an ideal situation, I would say probably, you know, a counselor, a mental health, you know, counselor. But we are dealing with situations that are not necessarily ideal situations. So I'm going to err in the direction of caution and, you know, for the service of our students. The school superintendent has said that they knew, they, they need this person. And in terms of practicality also, we need more than one person in this particular location to handle what, 3,500 students? Is that what we heard last time? Right? 3,500 students. Okay. And various locations. It seems to me that, you know, realistically, it's probably better to have somebody that these students know whose face they probably recognize, and they're not going to freak out, you know, when the person shows up, as opposed to bringing in somebody that they don't necessarily know, who is new to them. So like my colleague, Commissioner Alsager, I'm going to support this with just that caution. And we would like to see some data also. We're gonna, you know, it's not just simply saying, give it to you and then that's it. We want to see some information, some report, comprehensive report at the end of a year. Okay? I would like to see that. I'm going to support this, as I said, in the interest of our students, to support the school principal, to support the staff, but to also support the parents who probably are saying, we do need somebody here, and to make sure that our students are actually safe, that attention is being given to them. And to save Director Loria also.
Could, and I know we can probably discuss this at a later time, but can you tell me what kind of information that you would be looking for? I mean, obviously, I can give you calls for service and, and that sort of thing, which, which again, is, is, can be difficult, because the WSU officer may deal with four different issues, I'm making the number up, in a day. So would, would you say, and, and maybe not do a police report or any sort of record of it, but if you're looking for that sort of data, then we have to provide a, some different directions so that you get what you're looking for?
Okay.
And, and again, I'm not asking for an answer tonight, depending how this goes.
Okay.
But certainly, I would be interested in, in what you wanted to see.
Excellent. So you're right. And when I say report, I'm not just simply talking about report from Director Loria. I'm also looking at the school, because the school is asking us to commit ourselves to support this. As such, since the school is in close contact with the students practically daily, yeah, we want a report from the school superintendent or, you know, to tell us how this has worked. You know, we can talk about this in detail so that I'm not doing this right here. But we do, I mean, what, what basically I'm asking for is some level of accountability. Let's, I'm just going to use that word. That's all I'm asking for. What are we, we're investing, forget the money. We're dealing with human beings, we're dealing with people, and we're asking to provide support, to make sure that our students are whole, to make sure that our students are safe. We're going to have to assure the parents that their kids are not going to be confronted by somebody whom they perceive as threatening. I don't care whether you're brown or green or red or whatever. I want to know how this works out, just in case a year from now, two years from now, Superintendent Verelaga comes back again and says, we want your support. Okay, show me, tell us what you've done, what happened with the one that, when we gave you support this time, when Ake here said, I'm supporting you this time, convince me that you want me to support you again. That's all I'm asking for, accountability at both ends. From the school and Director Loria, who is going to send this person out. That's all.
Commissioner Asman, do you have any thoughts on this?
My wife taught at Renaissance Public Schools for 19 years, and Trooper Mike White was the school liaison, and I watched-
Commissioner Asman?
Yeah.
I don't think your mic is working. Is it? Or maybe you're not close enough to it?
Sorry. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So as I was saying, she was taught at Renaissance for the last 19 years, and Trooper Mike White was the police liaison for that school. And I watched him foster positive relationships with the student body, and, you know, maybe helped change the minds of some students that had bad interactions with police officers. And, you know, there's parents that battle addiction and everything else under the sun these days. And to see him help that come out in a positive manner was rewarding to me to see. So I support this as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Simon?
Yeah. See, I would be interested in-
Can you move your microphone closer?
I'm sorry. This is better?
Yes.
I would be interested in holding a public hearing and getting more information and data. As of right now, this isn't something that I would be supporting. My background is in sociology, so I've done a lot of academic work in, to structures and services provided by schools. And I understand structurally what happens when we bring police officers into schools, and I just don't think that the data supports the goals that we're trying to reach by doing this. I know that we aren't making a decision structurally, and I, I see what the arguments would be for doing this in Mount Pleasant. However, I know what the consequences can and often are. I would be willing to look into other ways to meet the goals that we're looking at, other ways to bring in mental health services, things like that. And like I said, I'd be interested in holding a public hearing, getting more information, hearing from residents, but as of right now, I wouldn't be supporting this.
Thank you. As many of you know, I do have a mental health clinic in town here, and I do deal with a lot of adolescents that go to our schools. Some of them are fine with it, and some of them aren't. They just feel, they feel intimidated, or they feel like they're just not, they are not heard in the school anyways. Last time, when the superintendent came, the last meeting, she stated that 50, over 50% of the parents polled asked for more mental health services. But then I've heard from other people that they have plenty of mental health services in the schools, but unless you have a counselor or a therapist or a social worker that has a caseload of 20, 25 a week, and they're able, and then there's enough to cover all of the students, you don't have enough mental health services. Myself, I run a full-time practice, and I have probably about 25 people that I see a week, and that's a lot of people. That's a lot of services that I'm providing on top of what I already do. And if you're looking at a school counselor, that's exactly what you're looking at, their, their duties as school counselor, and then working with students. We have a mental health crisis in this, in this nation. We have individuals that are not receiving care, either because they live in an area where they can't get it, they live, they do not have access to insurance that will cover it. And I know that you had said that Isabella Citizens for Health was going to be providing some services. And the first thing that went to my mind was, well, that's a, a medical facility, and they do have counselors there, and I know the people that work there, and they do an excellent job, but how are they getting paid? Are we asking the students to provide their insurance? Well, what if the student doesn't have insurance? Do they get to see the counselor anyways? Or are they just put on a wait list, or they have to wait until there's time? A lot of times, the behaviors that happen with children and adolescents, in this country especially, we criminalize very quickly because we do not want to have to deal with it. But they're just behaviors that are very normal, but sometimes blown into larger proportions because the children and the adolescents don't feel like they're being heard. We have part of our brain that does not fully develop or is not fully developed until we're about 25, and that's our prefrontal cortex. That's our logical part of our brain. Our children and our adolescents do not have that development. They do not have that logical brain, they do not have that problem solving. Us as adults, we're here to provide that for them. And what, to me, saying that we are going to provide that with a law enforcement officer is saying that we're not giving them the benefit of the doubt of being children. We're just saying, you're doing wrong, and we're punishing. Now, I have no idea how you guys do your punishment. I don't know the hierarchy of it. I've not been given that information. I don't know where we go with this. And I'm not saying that I'm not going to support this, but right now, I don't have enough data. I don't have enough information on this. I understand the information that Director Loria gave us on the training for these officers, which is good training. I would suggest that when you do implicit bias training, that you do follow-ups that month, three months, and six months, because implicit bias is exactly that. It's unconscious bias. It's things that we do not realize that we have. And one day of training, or two days of training, is not going to provide that for us right away. We're going to have to be reminded of it all the time. I'm going to be supportive of having a public hearing, because I do want more data. I'm very data-driven. I don't like to be just told by somebody, this is what has to happen. I like to know what it is about. It's important to me. And when we're dealing with the lives of our children and adolescents, it takes a high priority for me. Are there any further questions or discussions? Commissioner Ecky?
I, I do agree with Mayor Pirschbacher that, you know, data is important. But I also see that perhaps what makes this a little bit different is the immediacy of the situation that, you know, the school is faced with at the time that they want the youth officer. So that it is immediate, it's right there, it's urgent. They need somebody there right then. So I wonder whether, in the absence of that immediacy, you know, whether they would seek somebody else. So what happens in a situation where this is urgent and somebody needs, you know, to be, you know, the situation needs to be de-escalated, to what extent, therefore, does this particular person, this youth officer, you know, help de-escalate the situation? And that's what I'm thinking of. I understand, I, again, I go back to what I said about two weeks ago, that it seems to me that ideally, what you need is, you know, a, somebody who works with mental health, counseling and, you know, and counseling and, you know, and, um, as opposed to the youth officer. But given the list of tasks that this person is going to do, and that currently is being performed by one youth officer, um, there is a little bit of a compelling argument that, you know, they probably need a second person. And hopefully that would help. I am not saying that data is not important. I, I'm also saying, yes, I understand these situations, but we also have to think about it in terms of the practicality of just one person doing this particular task. It seems to me I'm arguing for Verliger right now. Oh, my God.
Well, as this was a follow-up discussion, um, there is an opening for a motion, if anyone would like to.
I would like to move that we move forward with this.
How would you like to move forward with that?
Uh, sorry, I'm not well-versed in all the rules, but, uh, how it's written.
I mean, a second officer?
Yeah, to, to add an additional officer to this program.
I second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for, to add a second officer, a youth service off, units officer. And a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Right.
All those opposed, no?
No.
No. Motion carries. Now, we move on to number 12 on our new business, um, to consider resolution approving the downtown Mount Pleasant Social District and approve a budget amendment of the same. Manager DeSantis, please give us an overview.
Absolutely. In consideration of Broadway Central 2022, the City Commission directed staff to move forward with a social district in the downtown area. A social district will allow for alcoholic beverages to be purchased from specific downtown vendors such as restaurants to be consumed outside within the social district. A lot of other cities in Michigan, including Midland, Holland, Grand Rapids, Ada Township and Petoskey, and many others have social districts. In talking with a lot of those other cities, none have reported any major concerns or issues as a result of these programs. The resolution that you have in your city commission packet will establish the social district. It's also been written so that activity between the months of November and May will only serve as special events. Otherwise, the social district will be in operation for one year, each day 11:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. The district will contain signage indicating boundaries which have been established on the map in your city commission packet. Costs for this program will not exceed $5,000, which will be for marketing, maintenance and supplies. The attached resolution will also, uh, set a $250 fee, but waive that fee for the first year so that way businesses in the downtown can try it. The city he, if the city commission has any further questions, we do have our downtown director, Michelle Sponseller, here, who would probably be able to answer any of those questions you have.
All right, thank you. Are there any, um, questions for the staff prior? Commissioner Ake?
How much buy-in did you get from the businesses? I know that part of the obstacle when we're talking about what to do with the downtown area was businesses, you know, saying they didn't have, it will cost parking space and a whole range of things, so.
Thank you very much.
I like this. And thank you for the good work you've done, but tell us how much buy-in you got from the businesses.
So some of that came down to the finer details of the operational maintenance plan. Some of that was a little bit, I'm going to call it negotiation. How long did the, um, would the annual timeframe be? Could we have these during special events and things like that? There are, I would say at this point, 50% of the establishments downtown are willing to go forward. There are a handful, though, that they're just straight up, they are full capacity with staffing issues. It's not something that they can take on at this time. So that's okay. We need a minimum of two, I think, to start out with. We're going to have four.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
Just a comment, that it'll be a long walk to go from one of the downtown operations, a couple blocks, to go to the facility that, to our, to our west.
Yes, there are two that are outside of that.
Yeah.
There's Gango Tree and then Mountain Town.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that if it's a nice day, and I think they start at 11? Was it 11:00 in the morning?
Mm-hmm. Do you think?
Correct, 11:00 a.m.
Well, that's a lot of hours to walk, so they'll get there.
Well, I don't think everybody'd be out there for the whole time. I wouldn't think so.
It's okay, they'll get to know, uh, downtown, that's all.
Is there a motion to place on the floor before we go into discussion?
I move that we adopt, again, having a social district in the downtown business area.
I second.
Will that include the approval of the budget amendment?
Yes.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this?
Just a comment?
Yes.
I want to thank, um, Ms. Sponseller for this. Um, this is thorough, this is informative, um, you did the work. So thank you, uh, for, you know, doing this and for making it possible for us to, uh, make the downtown inclusive and welcoming for our people.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? If you'd like, we can go to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution approving the downtown Mount Pleasant Social District and approving the budget amendment, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. At this time, we've come to announcements on city-related business and, or city-related issues and new business. This is for commissioners and staff to make announcements. Does anybody have an announcement that they would like to state or an issue they'd like to bring forward? No? All right, then I will close the announcements on city-related issues and new business, and we will open up the podium for public comment on agenda and not agenda items. If you wish to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address. You'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use this raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. At that time, you will be brought into the meeting. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come to the podium? Come forward.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Verliger. I reside at 402 South Ventura, and I am the proud superintendent of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I wanted to thank you for your thoughtful conversation this evening and for your support with reservation. I certainly understand that and look forward to working together in the future so that you have all the information that you need. So thank you for your time. Thank you to the police department and to the city manager. We definitely appreciate your support and look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to come forward? Come forward.
Little weird being up here, not knowing where to, where to look exactly. Um, hello, um, my name is Boomer Wingard. I live at 119 East Broadway Street, um, Unit C, if it matters. Um, I'm running for a city commission and I'll be on the ballot in November. Uh, wanted to take a moment to just introduce myself. Um, I look forward to meeting a lot of people in the community, um, just in the endeavor of campaigning like I already have. In the seven years I've called Mount Pleasant home, I've built a lot of friends, a lot of family in the community, and I hope to be able to carry that on for anyone else who might be able to call Mount Pleasant home, that they can build that same community here. Um, thank you so much. Um, you can learn more about my campaign at electwingard, W-I-N-G-A-R-D.com. Thanks so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience here would like to come forward and speak? Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak?
No, there's not.
Do we have any emails?
No, we do not.
Last call for podium speaking. All right, this time we will close the public comment. We have a work session tonight, which will be a housing discussion that we started quite a few, quite a few months ago. Um, and we will come to that after we take a five-minute break. So we're going to recess until 7:45.
This should be available if you need it.
Yeah. Aaron, I'm Paul with that. Appreciate your work. Thank you, yeah. I was happy with it too. It's just an interesting topic, so I think everybody on the team put their best thought forward, drafted some good backing. Forward here what the commission says.
Hey, Chris? Chris? I don't want, I don't want to log in as we. What's the, um, this room's, uh, user? Do you want to, do you want to put that up there or?
We could. I was just going to say, I, I have the, uh, questions here, so.
Yeah. Well, whatever's easier for you, right?
Never hurts to have a backup, so why don't we go ahead and do it since we're already ready? Do you know, are we going to be still broadcasting?
Uh, as far as I know.
Not.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Just wondering if that means that people watching will see this?
Yes, yeah, okay. As far as I know.
Yeah, which is a good thing, right?
So.
Yeah, that's kind of where I thought we'd, we'd go. Yeah, and that's actually good because then if they have a question about that, I'll pop up here. Kind of too smart. Yeah, I, uh, I actually talked to him today and he told me that he was happy with how things went last week. He's been pretty well. So we're going to take the same approach, which essentially was, uh, him and I meeting for 30 minutes or an hour to talk about cases that I, they reported. That tomorrow. And then he, uh, what's coming, doing kind of eating more. I don't want to cure like. Yeah, I'm going to do kind of a high level and show obviously that I'm pretty deep and I'm not going to go through the mellows. Yeah, uh, I thought, but yeah, I mean, it's sometimes it's a quality.
I'll start with that. I just, I'm kind of, it's, uh, it's hung it up just a little, a breeze over some of the, yeah, I just, uh, I would, uh, I would choose. We really want to focus on the question that's kind of more about, uh, what's going on.
Oh, discussion. That's right. That's right.
It was, it was offset from...
He's Louise. Director Loria, can you go hunt down Commissioner Allsager?
Uh-oh. Sending the sergeant-at-arms.
The sergeant-at-arms out after you.
Nice of you to join us.
Yes, nice of you to join us. All right. We're going to call this eating, this meeting back to order. We are starting on a housing discussion. Manager DeSens, can you please give us an overview?
Absolutely. You know what? I'm going to...
You're on.
All right. I'm going to hand the overview off, actually, to our Public Services and Economic Development Director, Mr. Bill Merdeza.
Excellent. Phil?
Thank you, City Man... Thank you, City Manager. Is this on?
It is. I can hear you speaking on it. There we go.
All right. So just a real brief overview in terms of why we're here tonight. We actually started this back in about April of, I'm sorry, back in 2019. And our former city planner, Jacob Kane, had done an extensive report on housing conditions in the city, kind of an overview and a, and an inventory of where we were at that time and what our potential needs or opportunities might be at that point in time. So fast forward into 2020, we revisited that, that report and looked at specifically the question about affordable housing and pilots. And at that time, the City Commission wanted to continue with the current pilot policy that basically said we were not offering any new pilots since about 2001. Again, fast forward, as the current City Commission had an interest in exploring housing issues in the city, we kind of dusted off that 2019 report. And Jacob and I, back in April of, of this year, had a work session with the City Commission. And at that time, we talked about several different areas that we could look at, kind of based on the housing report from 2019 and the City Commission's interest in housing in general. So as a result of that work session, we talked about three broad areas that you were interested in looking at additional information and perhaps developing some programs around, if you will. So one of those was the idea of affordable housing. And we talked about the need to reconsider or revisit the current prohibition on pilots if we were to have any type of affordable housing development occur because of the competitive nature of the funding from the state to allow those types of developments to occur. So that was one area that we heard that you were interested in taking another look at. And that's one of the topical areas that we'll be discussing tonight and one of the three memos from McKenna in your packet around that topic. The second area that we heard you were interested in was trying to find ways of incenting or encouraging, if you will, additional owner-occupied housing in the community. So, you know, we, we talked a lot about rental housing and a lot of that, you know, is around student housing, but we also have other rental housing that's either single-family rental or non-student rentals. You were specifically interested in seeing if we could encourage additional owner-occupied housing to occur. And Mr. Kane, when he was still here, started to research a particular product, if you will, or program called Neighborhood Enterprise Zones, NEZs. And the second memo in your packet talks a bit more about NEZs. And Mr. Lippens, who I'll introduce in a moment from McKenna, kind of picked up the banner from Mr. Kane and filled in some of the blanks and did a more thorough job in terms of what that might look like and how it might be used for that purpose. And then the last area that we heard that you were interested in, at least for now, these aren't mutually exclusive or end-all, be-all's, but the, the third area that we heard that you had some interest in was taking another look at the owner-occupied incentive program that we used to have, which assisted folks with down payment, making down payments on homes where they were giving up their rental license for a period of time and converting those rental units into owner-occupied units. We, we stopped that program several years ago and took a pause on that. And I, that was one area that we heard that you were interested in seeing if we could either resurrect that program to make it more effective or look at some ways of incenting the conversion of rental units to owner-occupied units in the areas where it might make sense to do so. So that would be the third memo that's in your packet that outlines that program and has a more robust discussion around that. So those are the three areas that we thought we would have a discussion tonight. If we don't get through all three of those, you know, perhaps we could continue this. But I hope that we can move through rather quickly and have more input from the City Commission on the three areas that Paul will outline. And as part of your packet, we put together a series of questions on each of those three areas to help generate a discussion with you and give us some ideas in terms of what parameters or answers to those questions that you might offer to us so that we can structure some programs or move forward with ways of implementing something that makes sense for the community around those three areas. So with that, I'm going to introduce Paul Lippens. Some of you know Paul. Paul was involved with us in the city's master plan, which was adopted a couple of years ago. And he and his firm are currently engaged with the city on a consultant basis to provide planning services for us while we look for a new staff city planner. So with that, I will turn it over to Paul, and it's all yours, buddy.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Commission and City Manager, for having me here this, this evening to assist with this discussion. It is definitely my pleasure and my team's pleasure to be assisting the city as interim planner while you do a search for a new city planner. We've, we enjoyed working with the city on the master plan. We've been helping the DDA with some work since then. And happy to slide into this, a very important discussion on housing. I would say I definitely was impressed with the work that the City Commission and staff did to get us to this point. I would describe it as kind of the, the report prepared by the prior city planner documenting the housing need really made the case for why you want to look at these programs. And what we've tried to do with the memo tonight is provide background and basis for the formation of policies around each issue. And the idea would be that in this discussion, we would highlight some of the, the points where we can tailor-make a strategy for the city of Mount Pleasant with the idea that, you know, through having this discussion, we could then come back with a draft policy for consideration. And I outlined that a little bit in the cover memo before what we're looking at here. But I did want to talk about these three strategies just, just briefly. So, so pilots, what that means is payment in lieu of taxes. And because it is payment in lieu of taxes, it really comes off as a tax break. And your reaction is, why should we be giving, you know, this is everybody's reaction, why should we be giving developers tax breaks? Don't developers make all the money? And shouldn't they be paying taxes for that money? And unfortunately, framing the art, the, that discussion about pilots in that way really misses the point, right? What we need is more housing, more affordable housing, more accessible housing. And there is a big gap between what it costs to build that housing and what people can afford to pay for that housing. And so pilots is really a tool that goes hand-in-hand with the, the LIHTC program, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, that provides a way for jurisdictions, municipalities, to receive the actual cost for services, to have that housing built in communities, but also help reduce the tax burden to people for providing this service. So I would say, you know, what the city of Mount Pleasant has done is documented a need for affordable housing. And pilots is one of the tools that you can use, not only to make sure that your residents can reach attainable housing for, for new and remodel housing, but also that developers can fill the gap. Because not, not only with current construction costs, but even before we had mortgage rates increase, construction costs go up, the cost of labor go up, you know, the gap between housing construction and the amount of revenue you can get for this development has existed along, for a long time, especially for the type of housing and the quality of housing that the city of Mount Pleasant is looking to achieve. So with that, as you can tell by the memo that my colleague Andrew prepared and drafted, there are, is a lot of flexibility in the ways that those programs can be implemented. We have some discussion prompts. I'd like to start with that. Certainly, depending on how the conversation goes, we could come back for the NEZ discussion or the owner-occupied incentive discussion, but we might be able to get through it, it all. So NEZs, I'm going to briefly talk about NEZs, Neighborhood Enterprise Zones. So Neighborhood Enterprise Zones, as opposed to being like pilots, which really are developer incentive, it's an incentive for developers who build larger projects. NEZs are, developers can make use of NEZs, but they're more targeted to smaller projects and to incentivize incremental action. So I think the, the first level of NEZ is that, uh, the one that goes to the homestead tax. So one owner buys a house in a specific neighborhood and then they get their house burden or tax burden reduced to 50% over the course of, you know, up to 15 years. That is outlined in the memo. There are actually two other ways of using this as a program outline in the memo that I, I think are also interesting. One is, you know, for mixed-use development and, or for owners to, to build multi-use developments but live in one of the units. And I think considering the potential for NEZs to be not only used to incentivize owner-occupied units, but also to create more rental housing, is something that I would definitely recommend the Commission consider. Essentially, what I'm saying is utilizing the full power of this tool to incentivize housing types and the types of housing you want to see in the community. And we could talk about that a little bit with our discussion prompts. The last one is, is a tool that's really a general fund tool, right? So that is a local policy. The city formally had a, a policy to incentivize owner-occupied housing, and it was essentially Down Payment Assistance Program that was funded through your, your own budgeting procedures. And I, we evaluated that a little bit. I shared in these memos some examples of other communities that have those types of programs, certainly beyond Down Payment Assistance. You could actually have programs for rehab and things like that, other things that really would help the city's housing stock. And I think one of the things that that memo highlights is setting the, the objectives, the goals, and the measures that help you to evaluate the importance of that investment and how you think about that investment in terms of impacting Mount Pleasant city residents and, and their lives, right? You know, it's often talked about that one of the benefits of homeownership is just neighborhood care, care over the neighborhood, incentivizing people to be long-term residents of places. But certainly, that doesn't happen through just the ownership of one home. People own, I think, on average, two to three homes in their lifetime. And what you want to do in a program like this is incentivize that ladder of homeownership so that people not only get their first home in Mount Pleasant, but build equity to get their second home, third home, and through that, become caretakers of the city's housing stock. And I think that in relooking at that program, which I think is a great program, establishing some measures and some goals would be, I think, valuable to future commissions, too, in determining what the success of that investment was. So that's my overview. I would like this to be a working session. So as you see in the cover memo, we did prepare a list of prompts. We do not have to cover all of those prompts. But I do think if we just went through question one through nine, for instance, in pilots, we would have a valuable discussion. But this is your working session. I would like to yield the floor, and I am here for assistance, as well as, you know, Bill has a wealth of knowledge about where you've been on this as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. One comment you made was, when you were talking about pilots and you were talking about, you know, building big new projects, I thought I heard you also use the word remodel. And I'm hoping that that's also part of it, because I think we're at a stage now, especially with CMU's enrollment going down, there's some big apartment complexes where perhaps students could live in some of the buildings and then some of the other buildings maybe could be part of a remodel plan.
I know the NEZs do allow for rehabilitation and remodeling, so I might have been talking about the NEZ program. I would have to, in my experience, I've seen pilots evaluated for new construction projects. Doesn't mean that it can't be done for rehab and, you know, unfortunately, I don't remember everything in the memo, so I, I have to double-check that.
Okay.
But NEZs, for sure, would be a good tool for rehabilitation and improvement of the existing structures. Should we go, should I walk through some of these questions?
I think that'd be great.
All right, why not? So let's start with pilots. Pilots, again, payment in lieu of taxes. The idea is that you can negotiate with potential developers the terms of these payments in lieu of taxes. You can set, um, threshold criteria, you can give points for extra, extra things like using brick or design criteria. One of the questions we asked here, though, is, do you just want people to meet the zoning code and have a standard, uh, deal, basically, that everyone gets? So I'll, I'll start here with the first question. Is a lower shelter rate presented percentage set at three to 4% combined with a municipal service fee an acceptable approach? So background is, you, I think the upper end is 10%? Yeah, 4% to 10%. So at 4%, you would have a fairly low pilot that you're collecting, but you collect a municipal service fee that only goes to the municipality on top of that. So the background is that by doing, by doing a service-free, uh, fee approach, you would cover the municipality's rich risk, but you would also be providing a greater incentive at that range to cover that gap between cost and, and revenue.
Let me just add to that, that when you're looking at the, you know, 3% or 4% or up to 10%, that would be the tax, well, the amount that you would get back, but that would also need to be shared with the other taxing units, which is fine, you know, to share the wealth. But just be aware that, you know, if you're looking at, say, 7%, you know, typically, I think, looking at somewhere between 5% and 7% is, is what communities tend to do, again, because of the, the development costs and what the projects can bear to, to repay to the, to the community in, in lieu of taxes. The downside of that is, again, you may say, you know, you're, you're capturing, or you're getting back 6%, but then you have to distribute that, so you're not getting the full 6% back. Whereas if you lower the amount that is shared with the other taxing jurisdictions, but you also, in... you also institute or create a municipal services fee that covers the cost of providing police protection, water and sewer, et cetera, that is something that you keep the full amount of. So it seems to make sense to kind of blend those two approaches. To us, have a lower percentage on the project, but then also have a municipal services fee that's set within an acceptable range that you can defend, but, you know, typically somewhere around 2% to 3% is what communities look at for that. So that's kind of the basis of that particular question, I guess. You know, do you want to set a high percentage and then, you know, you kind of share that? Or would you prefer, if we look at kind of a split approach where perhaps you have a municipal services fee along with a lower percentage? And again, it has to make sense for the developer, but it also has to make sense for the community.
And would you suggest that those two numbers together would equal 10% or less?
Yeah, yeah. I think the most that you can charge for the shelter rate percentage is 10% total. But again, if you do that and then put a municipal services fee on top of that, or even, you know, 7 and 3, that might be a little bit burdensome for a project to actually move forward with. It might make great sense for the community. So I think we would probably want to look at best practices and also consult with MISTDA, Michigan State Housing Authority, because they are the ones that are providing the bulk of the funding to allow these projects and programs to occur. And that's really one of the reasons why a pilot is important if, as we talked about back in April, if meeting the market that is out there for affordable housing and the demand is important to the commission. Having a pilot in place is going to be key to allowing you to address that market because without that, the developers are not able to generate the number of points to have a competitive project submitted to MISTDA to get the bulk of their funding or a big chunk of their funding along with their other means of financing their project.
Didn't we do something where they did worker housing with the, I think it was the Housing Commission that purchased it from CMH, a building?
We did something along those lines.
Didn't we do something with a municipal service fee on that?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, that's what, that's where my mind was going.
Mary Ann could chime in because she would know the details of that. But yes, we did in the last year or two address that.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah.
Yep. Sorry, sir.
Oh, yeah, it's good. So I was seeing some nods to the idea of using the municipal service fee and also, you know, seems like there's a general understanding that you want to provide as much of a break as you can to fill the gap. So that's, the question is based on flexibility. What the municipal service fee is, it allows you to have a policy that ensures the city costs will be covered, but in doing so also provide the maximum amount of relief to achieve your goals. I will go on to the next question. Do you expect that all proposed projects will incorporate all of their housing meetings, units, meeting the criteria for affordable housing? So simply put, if you utilize a pilot, would you expect that 100% of the units in that development would meet affordable housing criteria? Or would you accept projects that incorporated a mix of housing, including market rate units and possibly even like 100% market, possibly even above that?
And that would be like Broadway Lofts?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. What have you noticed since you've been doing research in this area? What have you noticed, you know, as a pattern regarding, you know, the housing? Is it mixed? What is the common pattern really? Is it mixed or is it just simply?
Well, so, yeah, Bill's saying that the problem, that in his experience... Oh, you're saying the recommendation is 100% affordable? I might have a differing opinion, if that's okay, Bill. So I'll offer a different perspective. So I think it is definitely valid to say if we're offering an incentive that we want that incentive to be used for 100% affordable housing. The other perspective that I would offer is that, in general, having a mixed incomes in an area is positive and that if you were to offer mixes of incomes in one building, for instance, that that could have a very positive community result. So I would tend to say if you could have a project that incorporated multiple price points, that that would be acceptable. But I'm maybe differing from staff on that. And I don't know, Bill, do you want to?
Bill, I was just reading your memo.
Well, so again, so that's, my colleague Andrew, who couldn't be here tonight, maybe recommended 100% as well. So you ask 10 planners a question, you'll get 10 different answers.
And that's useful because, you know, there is the possibility that not everybody, that, you know, income ranges would compel you to have different people at different income levels, you know, seeking quote unquote affordable housing, because affordability is relative, right? So what is, you know, why would anybody recommend 100%? I understand you've given me a compelling reason for some mixed, you know, structure here. What about 100% where everybody hits 100%? What is the compelling reason?
For 100, to look at all units being affordable? If, and again, some of the research shows that if you were to look at a mix of, let's just say, market rate and also affordable housing in a development where you offer a pilot, that it may provide an unfair competitive advantage to the developer because now the community is subsidizing some of the market rate units because you're offering a pilot on that, right? So that would be a disadvantage for that. And it seems somewhat contrary to trying to keep the rents of affordable housing as low as possible. So you're trying to, that seems to be the focus of the reason why you're doing this, because we are talking about affordable housing as opposed to housing in general. So that would be one reason to counter the, you know, the argument or the thought process that you might want to have a mix of different, yeah, affordability in one unit, right?
Okay, cool.
And that does, that makes total sense to me. And like, my answer to that might be, why not subsidize market rate housing? Even 100% market rate housing is substantially lower than the cost of housing that is actually put on sale. So what I mean is, the way you figure the affordability of housing is based on median income. So someone at 100% median income still may need a subsidized rent. And so there is certainly an incentive to building, you know, using this tool to just make sure the highest quality product gets built in the city of Mount Pleasant. And the highest quality of product may be a product that incorporates even luxury units. So, you know, I think you could evaluate that for sure.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a comment. Isn't it true that at Broadway Lofts, that there is a mix? And that, this is what I've heard, that there's a waiting list for the market rate and the affordable housing units are not yet rented out? Do we know that data?
I think that was the last information we had received, is that there were a handful of units left that were the affordable units, income capped, that have not yet filled, whereas all of the market rate units have filled. But feel free to correct me if that's incorrect, Bill.
Yeah, that's my understanding, the market rate one first. The challenge for Broadway Lofts is that they have a range that they're trying to fit people in. So if you make a little bit above that, you don't qualify. If you make a little bit below that, you don't qualify. So it's, I won't say easier, you know, but if you have a market rate where anybody can qualify as long as you can meet that amount, you can rent those more quickly because you don't have to fit that exact criteria. But with Broadway Lofts, we are not, we don't have a pilot on that, right? So those are two different programs. We do have a, which Paul will talk about momentarily, the neighborhood enterprise zone applies to the upper three floors of the residential units. So that's being used for the housing units of the project next door. And there's a different program for the first floor, the commercial rehab district on the first floor for Green Tree and the office space that's available for lease in there.
Thank you. Commissioner Asman?
I just have a quick question. Can you tell me the end game of this? What is the, what's the goal? Please do, somebody.
We have so many residents in Mount Pleasant that are in rentals that it's like a poor percentage compared to other towns like ours, that it would behoove us to say, let's encourage more homeownership. So to me, that's the neighborhood enterprise zone. It's that piece of it. But perhaps this other piece doesn't seem as critical to you? I don't know.
It just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, some people may choose to rent.
But we're not forcing everybody to, you know, to move into, you know, the housing. So if they choose to rent, they can rent, but what about the people who actually need? Yeah, yeah, and who need, who need, who need housing?
Just about making it more accessible.
Yeah, yeah. There are people who come here and, you know, this is part of the conversation we had the other day, you know, where people are just coming in here to, you know, they've just been, you know, they're coming here to work, but they're not quite sure whether they want to buy a house right away or whether they want to stay for a long time. So here is something, you know, I mean, I know that as faculty, one of the things, I remember junior faculty, I don't want to call them junior faculty, but new, newly hired faculty, you know, a couple of years ago complaining they couldn't find place, they couldn't find a place where, you know, and these are people we interviewed and we said, come stay here, come work at CMU. It's a great place to work. And they're like, but we can't find a place to live. Where did they go? They went to Midland, they went to Alma, they went to other places, not Mount Pleasant. We want them to be here, so this might take care of that. And then, of course, you have staff, right? You know, who may not have a lot of money, you know, that work in hourly wages, and they need place to live also. So I think, you know, the idea is to provide something that, one, we can sustain, I'm committed to sustainability, if we can sustain this, you know, and something that also provides access to people at various levels, you know, of, you know. Yeah.
Somebody coming here to work at CMU is not going to look for affordable housing.
But you don't know. Yes, there are people, staff, you know?
There's staff.
Yeah, there are staff. Yeah, there are young people.
That they would be looking for a place to rent or a place to buy that they may not be able to, you know, afford a huge home at the time.
I have a colleague, I, you know, I'm not telling you who, but one of my colleagues for years, no, seriously, for years, you know, she kept talking about the fact that she kept trying to buy a house. She couldn't find, one, she couldn't find a house. Secondly, if she found the house, it was beyond her price range. And she wanted a house. Eventually, she got one, but oh my God, it was like the sky opened, right? You know? So price range and availability, those are the two big problems we have. So you may not.
I mean, I work at a university and I can't afford a house, so. It happens.
Did you say can or can't?
I can't.
Yeah, no, seriously, so, you know.
So Commissioner Asman, to address your earlier question.
What's the end goal?
Yeah, well, it depends on which of the three areas you're asking about. So we're addressing three different areas of housing, topics of housing. One, affordability, that's where we're talking about the pilots, right? One is how do we encourage more homeownership opportunities? And that, again, one approach, which we're talking about tonight, is the neighborhood enterprise zone as a tool to help with that. And then the third has to do with the potential of conversion of rentals to homeownership, to owner-occupied units, which we had a program before. And as Paul described, that may allow some folks to get into a house for a lower price and then kind of move along to have homeownership down the road. And then if that converts back to a rental, which the old program was enforced for five years, and then you could get a new rental license on that. Now, you know, that's one of the questions that we'll ask is, you know, what are you trying to do with that particular program? But that was geared toward trying to reduce the total number of, potential total number of rentals in town, especially as we look at a smaller student body that's here. And maybe we have too many student rentals or rentals in general. I don't know, you know, we have some of our landlords and developers here in the audience that could address that better than I. But that may be an opportunity for those units to be sold as a owner occupied, and we help with the down payment, so to speak, if that's a program that you're interested in doing. Again, we heard that there was a strong desire for the commission to try and get more of the residents in homeowner-occupied housing. That doesn't mean that rentals are bad, because as you indicated, there is a market for rentals and there's a whole spectrum of what those rentals will be. You have student rentals, you have maybe brownstones or townhouses, you have something like Broadway Lofts next door, you know, where it is apartment units that are rented, you know, in a downtown walkable area, et cetera, right? Kind of the missing middle, if you will, we've talked about that before. But for the pilot side, we're not necessarily talking about doing away with rents. What we're talking about is trying to allow those folks that are challenged to even make rents, to make that more affordable for them. So the pilots is a way of doing that. So one of the things that, in the memo that Andrew mentioned was that, that affordable housing looks at the cost of housing that is 30% of the income plus utilities, you know, paying no more than that in your, in your rent structure. So there's many folks that if you're looking at $800 or $900 a month for rent and they're making minimum wage, they're going to have a tough time only paying 30% of their income. They're going to be paying a lot more. And that's where the affordable housing piece comes from, which is where we're trying to address that portion of the housing market and, yeah, the demand that we see out there and that we hear from some of the folks that have been approaching us for a number of years with wanting to build affordable housing projects, because their data shows that there's an unmet need for that type of housing in this community, but they're missing or we're missing a critical tool that allows them to be competitive to do that. So that's, that's number one, okay? That's one of, you know, housing is a pretty complex subject. So we're just trying to take the elephant and, you know, break it down into chunks so we can.
I just want to know what, during each section, what is the goal? I just want to know what, during each section, what is the goal?
Yeah. So in this case, on this topic with pilots, the goal is to try and see if we can work with the folks that are in the business of building affordable housing developments and provide us the tools that allow them to invest in our community in that type of development in order to meet the need that's out there for affordable housing.
I, I have a comment about that, too. I see the need and I see the rationale, but it makes me think, where on earth would they be built?
What's that?
Where, where do we have land?
Yeah, that's the problem we faced, you know? Special.
That's why I was asking about remodeling.
Well, I don't see an abundance of homeless people, so I just wonder, like, where, you know?
But we're not.
They all live somewhere.
But we're not talking primarily of home.
No, I, I know that.
I see homeless people. I don't know where you live or where you walk, but I do see them. I see them in the parks. You've got to get out there early in the morning, like 6:00 AM or 5:00. Yeah. And then you start seeing some of them, you know? But, you know, but, but the issue is not just, yes, we do have homelessness, and I think it's growing in this city, but we also do have people who are not necessarily homeless, but can't afford to buy houses. I, I, I'm not joking. I, you know, I have a colleague who was looking for a place to, you know, to move from upstairs to lower level, a number of houses in my neighborhood, two days. Yeah. The stuff went like that. So, but then there are new people coming in, looking for houses too. The ones that are already advertised are gone. You know, they look at them, they get ready to make the offer. That's what I kept hearing. Then their houses are gone. Now where do these people go to live? They don't want to live with the students in the apartment, you know, student apartment complexes, right? So now where else are they going to live? So we've got to think about those people too, right? Who are coming in, you know, or who, like our colleague over there who says, yeah, you know, I want to move to something that I can afford. I would like to move from my house. I'm not just kidding. I'm not, I'm not moving from my house. I like my garden. I'm not giving that up.
So Commissioner Alziger, um, let me address your comment about what land do we have or that type of thing. But I first want to back up and maybe pivot a little bit off of our game plan for tonight, because we could have this discussion until midnight on housing and pros and cons and all that stuff, right? So I would like to make sure that we have enough time to talk about some of the other, um, opportunities that we mentioned, um, and come back to you with some products. So one of the things that I will mention that we didn't cover at the very beginning was, we want to try and get, um, some tools in place, because I know that housing is one of the commission's goals for 2023. So we want to try and get some tools in place, or at least propose some tools for you to consider for adoption in place by the end of the year, so that, uh, beginning in 2023, we can begin to implement the, um, the process or the direction that you've given us to, to begin to address. So, um, we thought that, again, given what we heard at the last meeting, that affordable housing was something that the commission was interested in addressing. And if that's the case, I mean, if your answer is no, then end of discussion. If the answer is yes, then we really do have to talk about giving us the tool to allow that to happen, which is where we're at the pilot, um, discussion. And we hope that we will be able to get you a draft, um, policy, a revised draft policy on pilots between now and the next couple of months as we put some things together. I would suggest that perhaps, um, we take the discussion points that are, that you may see on the screen there or behind you, um, and we'll take a stab at that in a draft policy, along with, um, a draft ordinance that needs to be adopted as part of that. And we can bring that back to you and you can tell us you agree or, you know, change this or we don't like that, et cetera. Again, if, what I'm hearing is that, um, affordable housing, addressing affordable housing is still a goal of the, or a, um, a priority of the commission. So I would suggest that we perhaps move beyond the pilot discussion. If you're in agreement and we can come back with a draft policy, we'll take our best guess as to what we're hearing tonight and what we've heard before, what you might be comfortable with and what you might not be comfortable with, and we'll, we'll work it out. Okay?
Okay.
To address your, well, okay, so that was pilots. The NEZ, if we go down that route, and some form of owner occupied incentive program, that we hope to have some, um, developed recommendations for a program by the end of this year, so that sometime in the first quarter of next year, we can roll those programs out and see if we can begin to make a dent in owner occupied, um, uh, units or getting folk, getting more folks into their own owner occupied units, or, um, something around, um, the conversion of rentals or allowing that program to act as a stepping stone for folks, uh, to get into a, um, a house and then move forward and build equity. So, and Paul can talk a little bit about more of those two programs, um, after I'm done going on here. Uh, but to address your, your question about land, um, we're not talking about city land. So the, uh, the folks that have, that have approached us about housing, uh, about affordable housing projects, uh, are looking to purchase property from private, um, owners now. Um, and the location of where that might happen is largely dictated by the metrics that fit the program that MISHDA has to kind of steer those developments in the areas that they have determined based on census data, et cetera, have the most need. Okay? Walkability is one part of that. Um, there's a number of other factors that go into their location analysis, but they get more points if they hit the, you know, the, all the hot buttons that MISHDA has in terms of location. And so they try and identify properties that might be available in those areas that get them the most points. And the most points are driven by the greatest need of, uh, and concentrations of folks that, um, fall within that affordable housing realm. So it's not necessarily looking at where the city owns, has, has property, but there's great opportunities for infill development. And I know one of the folks that have been in contact with us over this year, um, at one point had an option on a piece of property and they were just kind of waiting to see where we were going to get with the pilot discussion before they could move forward with that. And just recently I was contacted by a, a different entity looking to do affordable housing, and they had a different piece of property that they wanted to pursue. So, um, availability of land should not be an issue within the city.
Okay. Yeah. My, one of my thoughts as I read through this was that, yes, I think the pilots are necessary, but at the same time, so would be the neighborhood enterprise zones.
Yeah, these are not mutually exclusive.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. They, each of the three that we're talking about tonight kind of have a little different end game, if you will. They're, they're, each one is focused on a little different end product or a little different goal if we're successful or if we begin to implement that.
Okay.
Sorry if that wasn't clear at the beginning, but, um, hopefully it is now.
Yeah, I would just add to, um, you know, your city master plan and your city zoning ordinance establishes, uh, policy already that's supportive of different mixed housing types. And the city commission has said you want to work on this, right? So I didn't spend a lot of my time tonight presenting the need because you've already had that discussion. So I kind of dove right into the, the tools, right? And I say, anytime the city commission wants to revisit the need discussion, that's actually a really fun conversation to have. We're kind of in that part of the conversation where we're looking at these specific tools. And the, the goal of looking at the specific tools, right, is that you have policies in place that encourage a certain type of activity, but you don't have any incentives in place to help bridge the gap. So all three of these tools, they speak to different types of projects, but they all help bridge a gap in the market that is otherwise unfilled. So, uh, what, what you're doing in, in considering these policies is taking the tools that are available to municipalities to support the goals that you've already adopt, adopted and established, and you're adding that implementation tool into the mix to encourage and then incent that activity that is already aligned with the policies you've adopted. Does that make sense? Um, and of course, you're the city commission, so you can revisit those policies, revisit the goals. Um, you know, I mentioned in my memo that this, these goals are supported by the city master plan. Uh, we adopted the city master plan in 2018, and that's a process, every five years, you can re, relook at that and establish, you know, establish new goals. But, um, these, these, I would be confident in saying that in establishing, in establishing any one of these policies, you would be implementing your master plan. And you would be providing tools that help to, um, for, you know, private developers to better utilize the zoning ordinance that you have in place today.
Okay.
Um, so I've got a little bit of encouragement to move on to NEZ, um, but let me kind of briefly just kind of pause on this list of pilot questions. Um, you know, how long term should be considered? Uh, minimum 30 years or less? I'd just say you might want to think about a 15-year term because you think it's a, a, you know, a lower term that you're waiving taxes. But I would say probably, and in our memo, I think we maybe recommended 30, but tying that to the amount of term that the debt service is, is kind of what you want to think about. So some flexibility there. So if you're developers taking out a 30-year loan, you might want to think about a period that would align with their debt financing. Um, would you expect a policy, a specified term, uh, with which the policy would be issued, or should that be determined by the term of the mortgage? Same conversation, right? Like, would you allow, uh, either your pilot term to, to match the developer's financing or pro forma plan? Um, should, uh, should the pilot specify a rating system against what pro, uh, proposals are evaluated? Uh, I think we gave a few examples of some, uh, some rating systems that are used around the state. Uh, that might be a simple way for you to evaluate each project if you had some metrics attached to it. Although certainly you have the flexibility to negotiate with individual developers. Um, would you want to solicit, uh, proposals once or twice a year, or have a rolling program? People could submit whenever. You know, these are things that you could think about in terms of establishing your workflow. Uh, for instance, you could open up applications for a month in January and then a month in September or a month in July and just kind of see, you know, see what's coming. Or you could just do rolling and work with people as they come in. Um, specific elements you would like to see addressed in the, uh, proposal, or simply comply with the city zoning ordinance. The city does have a very good zoning ordinance, it's form-based ordinance, it's fairly, fairly recent. Um, you could certainly rely on the standards of your, your ordinance to ensure quality development. Um, but you could also have, uh, like I mentioned before, a threshold, uh, criteria or, uh, extra points for bonus design elements. And we've seen that in, in some, uh, parallel communities. And then do you have a preference size for the development? So, um, I ran through those just.
By preference, by the preference size?
Uh, like for instance.
In terms of number of apartments or, you know?
You, you could say available to, to, uh, developments with a minimum of 50 units.
Okay.
You know, you could, you could say, um, you know, must have a certain amount of square footage. Um, that would be like a specific threshold criteria that you could establish.
Okay, good.
So if there's no more comments on this, I ran through those quickly. Uh, uh, and I would say, as Bill mentioned, I think if, if we're sensing approval that you'd like to see a policy, we could move forward with that. I think the other thing I, I didn't mention is that, uh, it was inferred that the pilot program was the city commission's priority, uh, in, in terms of these three. So that's the one that we would be looking to do next. Um, so I'm looking for some nods.
Yeah, I'd like to see a policy. I don't know about my colleagues.
May I? May I press?
Yes. No, I was just thinking, some of these questions, um, we could definitely pull together. Um, but yes, we've always talked about, um, whether or not we wanted pilots. Uh, we know that there is a need for them. Um, and it wasn't that we said absolutely no to them. It was that we just wanted to have, I think, a little more control over what happens.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, I would infer that some kind of a rating system or criteria would be helpful in, in addressing that concern.
Yes.
And I think that's partly because, you know, when you list a question, we don't always have the frame of reference, you know, like, well, where, where is this on that scale?
Totally.
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's talk about the NEZ program for a bit. So NEZ is, I would say, kind of more of a, and I said this in my intro, it's more of a incremental or small-scale approach, um, although it can be used for larger projects. As Bill mentioned, it was used, uh, for the Broadway Loft, uh, deal, um, as well. Um, but, uh, it is a tool to incentivize home, homeownerships. Um, I would almost describe it as a benefit to homeowners as well. So, um, you might get people who are interested in buying and living in, uh, single-family homes within the city and might be willing to purchase a rental property, uh, maybe a property that's been a rental for decades. And in, as part of that incur kitchen remodels, um, you know, roofs that have been deferred for a long time, foundation repairs. Um, and I think that the NEZ program, I would characterize it a little bit about an incentive to get the types of people into properties who would make those types of investments in, in the neighborhood. Um, and so that's why I would almost describe it as a benefit to homeowners who move into that district as opposed to an incentive, because really the incentive to move in that district is to live in Mount Pleasant, right? Uh, you're a university professor and you want the house where you can walk to the university. You want.
Me.
Yeah. Uh, the people who want urbanism, right? They're looking to, for those houses and it's a competitive market to get them. Um, I think that in any C program, what it does is it helps incentivize those good actors in the community and helps them to make those roof investments, um, you know, for the period of time that, you know, those investments are needed, you know? Um, so it's good from that perspective. I also think to characterize it simply as a program for homeowners and ignore the fact that you can get people buying duplexes and renovating an apartment and that that could stay, uh, a rental unit. Uh, I think that's a very valid use of the tool. And in our memo, I think we cover, uh, the fact that actually the amount of people that use it strictly for the homeowner, um, incentive, single-family homeowner incentive is kind of less than these other two ways that the policy can be utilized. So.
So I, I need clarity there. Okay. Am I to understand that with the NE, NEZ, N-E-Z, you know, N-E-Z, NEZ, okay, that, um, in this case, the homeowner, does the homeowner need to, or must the homeowner live in the place? Or can the homeowner renovate the place, maybe partially, and then say rent out or sublet a section and live in a section? How does this work? Or the other segment is, can a homeowner live in a, another district or another section of town and apply, you know, and have the home they've just bought or renovated in a different section of town? I gave you three scenarios. So I'm trying to understand how this works.
I fast forwarded just to a, a summary about, uh, new facility projects that's in the NEZ memo. This describes, this describes a little bit, um, of what, um, outside of that, I'm a homeowner, owner, and I'm going to apply to have my homestead mileage, um, reduced. These are the scenarios that the policy could actually also apply to. So.
Facility, okay.
So the one that I think is really interested in, is, or interesting is the residential use with one or two units. So that it would be, uh, home occupied, but you, uh, can renovate and rent some other units. Um, and that could also be used for, uh, you know, new structures or condominiums. Uh, down here on the next page.
What page are you?
This is the NEZ memo, uh, which in your packet is page 50.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for, because I, I don't remember.
So this one, uh, So this one, there's, you can also use it for mixed-use buildings, and you can have rental apartments in those buildings, or you can have rental apartments in new facilities if there's also retail space. So if you do a mixed-use, you can, you can use NEZ for rental, which is how it was used in Broadway Lofts, because you have the grocery on the first floor. And then it also has to be in a qualified downtown district. So again, like, really interesting uses of this tool, which are not related to necessarily creating owner-occupied units. So you wouldn't have to have a policy that permitted this type of activity, although you already have used it, and it's kind of more broadly how it's been used in the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Let me go back up to my questions, yeah.
Bill has comments.
So perhaps an answer to your question, Commissioner Ecky, is it really depends on how you're qualifying the, the property to use NEZ. So if it's the, the second one that you mentioned, where you can have a mixed-use, yeah, you don't have to live there, but you also have to have some other qualifications, like it has to be mixed-use, retail, downtown, et cetera. So there are, again, the answer to your question is, how are you qualifying that? And then there's some specific requirements for that.
All right, thank you.
So my list of questions here, maybe I'll read them all, like I did last time, and then we can have a short discussion, and commissioners can hop in on, on any one of the questions that's interesting. So the one was, are you supportive of using NEZ as a method to address attracting owner-occupied housing opportunities? You know, that's kind of a rhetorical question, you know? I think it's probably, the flip side of that is actually more interesting, is are you interested in using it for non-owner-occupied housing incentives? Should it be a desirable tool for specific neighborhoods? You know, there is a requirement for 10 contiguous properties, so you do have to establish a district, although there's a procedure for allowing that to go to multiple places. It doesn't, like, I think we covered in Kalamazoo, which is where I live, it goes to neighborhood organizations to apply to have their neighborhoods put, made eligible for this program. Do you have questions or comments that are important for us to consider as we develop parameters? That's an open-ended question. If you've got things that we should address, we don't know about, we'd like to hear about them. This is that other question, you know, in addition to owner-occupied, rental, condo, missing-middle housing types, is this an incentive that should be utilized more broadly to address housing issues in the city? You know, would you consider a shorter term than 15 years? Or would you rather have a lower tax break than 50%, which is kind of the maximum range that the policy allows for?
What, what, what are the advantages of each? Because you're providing two paradigms there.
Well, so I think this is a question that is kind of, you know, the municipality, obviously, you collect taxes to provide the services that the city provides. So if you shorten the term or reduce the amount of relief that you're providing, you're essentially capturing more tax in the near term. So the question for the commission is, should you utilize the full amount of relief that this tool offers? Or should you reduce that and keep more tax funding into your general fund stream? And if you said you wanted a shorter term, we'd have to figure out, you know, how to implement that, what the term would be. You could also have a step where, you know, maybe you say, to be eligible for the full term, you must complete these activities, right? So-
What is, what is common practice? What have you noticed as common practice in this area?
In the, in the memo, I think we provided a few examples.
Yeah, I don't remember the memo. It's a huge document, so, you know, that we're looking at.
So I think that we provided some examples that have lower rates and shorter terms, and criteria.
Okay, I'll go back, I'll go back and look at it again.
And I will say that I know from experience, because I mentioned I live in Kalamazoo, I actually did apply to Kalamazoo's NEZ program, and they do offer the 15 years with 50% millage reduction.
Okay.
And, you know, my experience as a homeowner is that it, it wasn't that big of an incentive compared to the amount of renovations that I did, but I actually wanted to participate. So I did it to participate in the city's development strategies.
Maybe that's the question I should have asked you. What is K-City doing?
Yeah, yeah, they, it's, it's a program that, for the home, the homestead part of the program, they offer it through the Vine Neighborhood Association. Vine is the neighborhood I live in, and they provide as part of the home ownership, you know, when you purchase, they've got like a welcome packet that homeowners get to. And I was actually encouraged by the Neighborhood Association to apply, and I did it because I thought, all right, I'm going to do it. If this is what, if we're working on this in the city, I'm going to partake and do it. And I, you know, I have a little bit of mixed feelings about it, but I do think it's important to invest in neighborhoods, right? That's why I moved into my neighborhood, you know? And I think there's a lot of people like me that do want to live in city neighborhoods, and, you know, many of the, some of them are on the commission. But, you know, I would say, my opinion, and you're asking my opinion, is why would you do it if you're not going to offer the full benefit? You know? It's not really that much of a benefit, you know, compared with the cost of remodeling a house, you know?
Let me, yeah, jump in real quick. So Commissioner Ecky, as one example, you asked, you know, what are other communities doing? The example in your packet for Grand Rapids, for instance, talks about 10 new duplex and single-family homes using NEZ, right? So they have to be owner-occupied in order to receive the 50% tax credit. And they get a minimum of nine years, not the full 15 years, unless they kind of check off some of the other boxes, such as proximity to public transportation, affordability, housing type diversity, and then they can get up to 15 years at, at 50% if they're owner-occupied. So that would be kind of a stepped approach, if you will, you know, something else. If you give, you know, here's the minimum you get, if you give this, then you get a little bit more. If you give this and this, then you get a little bit more than that, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I finally located the page because I was looking for it again, so.
Couple other things I might mention. A program like this, in addition to potentially encouraging owner occupancy, would, I think, require us, as I think you mentioned, to identify some districts that it would be applied to. So it wouldn't necessarily be citywide. And I know Jacob started down that path, and looked at some of our neighborhoods, et cetera, and tried to, and began to identify the areas that would probably be most applicable. You know, you may pick one or two to try it out. The other thing that I'll mention is that as we help folks invest in their properties, perhaps through a program like this, we're also helping to raise the property values, not only of that home, but of other homes, hopefully, in that neighborhood, especially if it catches on, right? And one thing that Paul and I, Paul Lippens and I talked a little bit about was, if there was, and I, I understand that there might be an interest on the part of the commission to look at our property maintenance standards, our property maintenance code, as it applies to owner-occupied homes, we have one for rentals. If that was something that you were looking at at some point in the future, this could be one tool that would allow those folks that need to bring their homes up to standards of that code, that they could take advantage of and invest in their home to meet that. So there's several, I think several components of this approach that could meet some of the needs, or meet some of the goals that the commission has in mind for housing in general.
Thank you. Okay, cool.
So let me, are there more comments on NEZ? I know at this time of night, people start to fade a little bit, and I-
I try not to ask you questions.
Well, no, I love the discussion. I, I could talk about this for a while, but I'm just sensing there might be a desire to give, get some consensus, the conversation, so that we can come back with some policies. And to make sure that we use this time that we have to the fullest, I think I should present this owner, these owner-occupied policy prompt questions. So again, you know, this is a local policy that you can fund to encourage people to invest in buying homes in the community. And it's a down payment assistance. We included some examples of some communities that also provide some rehabilitation use with these types of funds, and, you know, I, I think it's a good thing. My takeaway is I see this as a policy, you know, owners and renters, right, they're not properties, they're people, right? And all people are good for a community, whether you choose to rent, whether you choose to own, you know, people bring value to communities. So I look at this as a program that actually incentivizes investment in your housing stock, so the improvement of your taxable values. And that's why I think about it like, let's establish what the goal is. If the goal is to incentivize owners into rental properties, the goal might just be about getting those rental properties invested in a different way, in the way that homeowner owners would. And then, if the property goes back to being a rental property after that, so be it, because you've created a homeowner, that owner has gained some equity, as we know homeowners do when they invest in properties, and maybe they buy their next property in Mount Pleasant as well. And that is a beneficial cycle. That's a cycle of economic development, and a cycle where you're investing in Mount Pleasant residents, and you're investing in the quality of your housing stock. So when we talk about, what do you see as the goal of such a program? Is it the permanent conversion of rental properties to owner-occupied units? Or is it a way of helping aspiring homeowners enter the housing market, right? That's kind of two different ways of framing the program. But in the latter, which you're, the way you're evaluating the program is much different. You're asking, what is, what are the effects of our investment on that resident? You know, when they moved? Where did they move? When they sold their house? Did the increase of the assessed value of that house go from, you know, did it jump up 150%? Did we improve the property values? What were the effect on the neighboring property values? Those are much different metrics than, did we shift the amount of rentals in Mount Pleasant from 40% to 39%, right? You can evaluate these policies on a case-by-case, investment-by-investment basis. So, second question. Should you give up rental license for five years? Is that a sufficient prime? Should it be longer, shorter? What is reasonable? You know, again, that requirement to keep that house off the rental market for five years, essentially what you're doing is saying, own the house for five years. I'm pretty good with that. Usually takes five years of owning a house for you to get any type of equity out of that investment anyway. But after that, maybe it's okay if it goes back to rental. Maybe it's actually the person who bought that house that then is renting, renting it while they move on to another property. And that, again, could be positive for your housing stock. If you get the type of people moving in that actually want to buy homes, fix homes, buy a new home, that could be very beneficial for the community. Question three, should the amount of the incentive be increased beyond the amount of the previous program? Which I think maxed out at 16. You know, we gave an example of increasing it to 25. Or should it be established as 20%, which is what's required for PMI to have equity in a property? You know, I think you could set that in multiple ways, but I think in the current market, a $16,000 investment is not, not a lot. It's a lot of help, but increasing it, I think, is, would be reasonable. I think maybe even saying, we'll give 10% of a purchase price, might be reasonable. And there's, you know, that's, that's one of the ways we can tweak this. Would the program be limited to a targeted area, particular type of unit or rental unit that you want to incentivize owners into? Should it be citywide, all rental types? I know, as Bill mentioned, I think Jacob's report on housing showed some pretty interesting places where you could consider applying the program. I don't think there'd be anything wrong with applying this citywide, though, if you wanted to make it available to everybody. But a localized program also, or localized in the sense of, for specific neighborhoods or even blocks, is certainly something you could consider. And then, should any of the objectives that are measured be included in the next version? So I actually, in, in this version of the memo, I, we talked a little bit about how to evaluate a program, and, and you might want to take another look at the memo just to think about if you're really, since this is a local incentive, since this would be something that you're funding locally, you, in establishing the measures and objectives for the program upfront, it will help you to report on it, to be accountable for it, and to, you know, continue to make that investment, and really to help, you know, future commissions evaluate that as well, to evaluate the work in your decision-making process. I do, I like this program. I would say, you know, if, if you want to invest in people coming to live here, this is an active way that, that you can do it. And I actually looked at, when I was looking at the numbers from the previous program, and I was thinking, you know, was this program effective at shifting the amount of renters that you have? And I looked at the census numbers, and I was like, maybe not. But you helped 16 people, was it 16 people? 15 people get, get homes? Those are 15 homes in your community. With the amount of money that was invested, you have to look person by person to really understand the impact that you had. And I, I think that this is the type of program that could have, you know, a tremendous impact. And you have control over it, too. So that's not, that's not something that you have with either of the other programs, right? Those are programs you work at in partnership with other taxing jurisdictions.
And other funding.
And funding sources, yeah. Yeah, that's the other thing, this could combine with some of the other programs, too. It would work well with NEZ, you know?
I was looking at the one in Charlevoix. Maybe I'll move to Charlevoix. It's like, I like the city, you know? It's like, but I don't want to live in the downtown area of Charlevoix.
Charlevoix is nice.
I know, I like the city, so.
Mount Pleasant is very nice. I'm blessed in my work as a consultant. I get to spend a lot of time in many Michigan cities, and I definitely love my time in Mount Pleasant, too. Good stuff going on here.
Yes, absolutely. Please, you know, tell other people about us.
I do have a thought. I think I agree that there's a need for all three types of these programs, but I think one specific area that we might want to focus in would be kind of the downtown towards campus, where there's a lot of rentals, houses of varying sizes, that would be great if those could be switched from rentals to ownership.
Yeah, downtown towards campus and at the edge of campus. There are several buildings over there.
Well, even on the west side of the city.
Yeah, I was thinking of the west side, too. Especially with the, what is it, the NEZ? You know, I was thinking about the west side when you was talking about that. You know, that we could use that over there, you know? But thank you for giving us, you know, a number of options, possibilities to look at.
Yeah, and as Bill covered, too, so you, you know the need, you've, you've had a discussion about the need, you know, this is really diving into the tools, right? So the next step is to share, share some policies. And I'll let Bill conclude the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
So I guess my question to the commission is, are we kind of on the right track with what we laid out? Obviously, the devil's in the details, as they say. But if we continue to move ahead with taking what we presented tonight as concepts, and begin to manipulate those into programs with more substance, or at least give you something to react to, to adopt, or, or modify, or amend in some way, that's kind of what's been in our head, to try and address your need to look at housing as a goal. So if, if I don't hear anything to the contrary, I guess is what I'm saying, we'll continue to work, and probably, as Paul indicated- to work and probably, as Paul indicated, look at the work around pilots as the first step. We were thinking that if we could get something adopted by the commission that we can all live with by the end of the year, that at the first part of the year, we could then begin to solicit projects, and whether it's one project, or two projects, or as they come in, I would, I think our initial thoughts were, let's give it a try and see what we get and how it works for us with a project. So we may get three or four proposals for a pilot, but we may want to take a look and see what makes the most sense for us, and then come back to you, and, you know, you'd be, you'd be presented with an application or a request to grant a pilot for a particular project, we'd make some recommendations around that, and then see how it goes from there. And if it seems to meet the need, or, you know, addresses the affordability, and it's also not a, not just affordable housing, but also elder housing is another component that that could be used for, and that's eligible for Mishda assistance. You know, maybe we, we look at a couple a year. Now, I know for Mishda funding, which is kind of where that whole housing affordability conversations circles around, they typically have a round in April and a round in October. So there's kind of a built-in two-times-a-year type thing. That doesn't mean we have to do that two-times-a-year, but anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of that. So, Mr. Dissents, anything that you would like to add that we're missing, or that we need to cover more thoroughly?
I think we've covered everything very thoroughly tonight, Bill. Thank you very much. No, I think really if we can, I think based on the head nods that we've gotten tonight, we're on the right track. I would suggest then the staff goes back, utilize the information that we presented here tonight to develop some policies, bring that forward to the city commission for your final approval and consideration.
And I want to remind the commissioners that even when we have these discussions, sometimes, you know, you go home and a couple days later, you think, oh, I should have asked this, or this just came, you know, I saw this, and this is something I'd be interested in, and there's nothing holding you from emailing our manager and saying, I would like this question answered, I'd like a little more information on this, because that helps you guys put your stuff together as well.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. We'd welcome that as you give it some more thought. It certainly reduces the number of questions when we're just about ready to take a vote down the line, right? So we want to try and get as close to what everybody can agree to early on, so that we don't have to drag this out further than it needs to be.
Yes.
I think I'd like to make this suggestion that we also start, and I know, you know how to work your time the best, but to start the work on the neighborhood enterprise zones as well.
Yes, yeah, we, as I indicated, we hope to kind of do all three by the end of the year, but kind of focus on the pilot first, because likely we'll be getting, well, I already know I'm getting some interested parties contacting us, and they'll be really anxious come January gearing up for their, I believe, April deadline, so. That's kind of the reason that I was focused on the pilot, because to me, that was a little lower-hanging fruit. It was more easily defined, and it also addressed what I heard from the commission, that affordable housing was something important to you, and so that seemed to be the easiest one to address and get out of the way first. So that doesn't mean that the rest are on the back burner. We're, we want to try and have a final product done and ready to start the implementation, as I said, first quarter of 2023 on the other ones.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Comments? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you for your patience and your attention. I know it's a big thing, but it's a big thing.
And thank you, Paul, for coming in and giving us this information as well. We appreciate it. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, we are adjourned.